This is TB thirty. It is seven o'clock and I'm going to count you in. Standby. And then five, four, three, two, one, cue.
Good evening and welcome to this meeting of February twelfth, twenty twenty-four, meeting of the Livermore City Council. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Barry Antos. Councilmember Branning.
Here.
Councilmember Kik.
Here.
Vice Mayor Carling.
Here.
And Mayor Marshawn is absent for the record.
The mayor is not feeling well, so he's not here this evening, and I'll be conducting the meeting. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and let me ask the city attorney if there is any reportable action from our closed session meeting?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is your city attorney, Jason Alcala. No, the council did not take any reportable action.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item three point one, Proclamations and Presentations. We have a presentation from the acting airport manager, Benny Stuth. Mr. Stuth.
Honorable Vice Mayor, members of the city council, this is your city manager, Mariana Marashova. While our acting airport manager is getting ready, we just wanted to share with you that typically the airport commission would be presenting this update unfortunately due to travel and unforeseen circumstances. None of the members are available tonight, and therefore our staff will be presenting an update. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Carling, members of the council, and Benny Stuth, the acting airport manager for Livermore Airport. I'll be giving you guys the annual update for the airport commission and instead of Darren Bishop, our airport commission chair. The airport commission is made up of five members for a term length of four years and term limits of two. The commissioners are from left to right, Darren Bishop, the chair, Christopher Dombrowski, the vice chair, John Levine, and Victoria Schellenberger. And currently, we are doing recruitment to fill the vacancy. We have two people that have applied, and so we are going to be moving through those. This will take you through Livermore in a twenty twenty-three review. The airport commission has fulfilled its role in approval advisory and community outreach roles. Those approval roles were through the airport development policy, the hangar policy update. They provided direction on the airport minimum standards for commercial aeronautical activity for the inclusion of unleaded fuel, the Casper noise monitoring system installation and activation, the Fly Quiet Fry Friendly Program, updating airport signage, increasing outreach, and addressing noise concerns, as well as conducting the airport open house. The annual operations at the Livermore Airport for twenty twenty-three stood at one hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-six. Operations are defined as a landing or takeoff. It'd be noted that the highest operations ever at the airport were in nineteen ninety-three with two hundred and eighty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one operations. We have noticed since the pandemic, those operations have been increasing and returning back to semi-normal levels. The airport is an asset to the Tri-Valley community. It provides air tours, flight training, aircraft maintenance, and avionics. It also supports aviation and STEM education, as well as multiple youth programs, especially those through the Experimental Aviation Association and the Civil Air Patrol, supports emergency law enforcement, disaster relief services for the Tri-Valley area, provides access to emergency medical flights, especially those through angel flights for those families in need with children with complex medical conditions, and it also provides a gateway to the Tri-Valley area for major businesses such as Ross, Chevron, Costco, and Safeway. Currently, the projects at the airport that the airport commission will be providing direction on, but not necessarily approvals, the airport land use development analysis, and then, of course, additional projects and policies as they arise. And with that, any questions before I take off?
So to speak. Thank you. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the council? Mr. Branning?
Just a really quick question. If you don't know off the top of your head, you can send it to me later. But do you know what the average number of, you know, takeoffs and landings were over, say, the last twenty years? So what would be returning to normal levels?
I would definitely have to get back to you on that, but currently it's about three hundred and ninety-seven a day.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Well, no. Thank you very much. Mr. Stuth?
Thank you.
Turning now to the open forum, I'll ask the city clerk to explain the process, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. The city council's agenda provides opportunities for the public to participate in the meeting by addressing the city council in the following ways. For non-agendized items, the public has the opportunity during open forum to address the city council on any item of interest that is within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction. For agendized items, the public can address the city council on each item of business it considers when the mayor opens public comment and should be focused on that particular item. Please note, a speaker is not required to answer any questions from the city council, and the city council is not required to answer any questions from the public. However, the mayor or vice mayor tonight has the discretion to ask staff to address the speaker's comments when a council member believes it is relevant to a particular business item. When participating in tonight's meeting, one comment may be given per person per item. For consent calendar items, one comment may be given for the entire consent calendar item. Consent calendar, excuse me. If consent calendar items are pulled for discussion by the city council, a speaker will be allowed one comment on the items pulled for discussion and a separate comment for the remaining consent calendar. To provide comment, please fill out and turn in a speaker card found at the entrance of the council chambers. Speakers will be announced in the order received. Once public comment opens, each participant's name will be announced, and their three minutes will begin once at the lectern. The mayor will announce the conclusion of public comment period after all comments have been voiced into the record. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and let's see, it's seven oh six, and so we'll have thirty minutes worth of comments. May we have the first person, please?
The first speaker is Greg Scott, followed by Donna Caban, followed by Shirley Lewandowski.
Acting Mayor Carling, Livermore City Council, City of Livermore staff, audience, video, and in this room. I am Greg Scott. I read a letter in The Independent on January twenty-fifth by Mr. Alan Burnham. It was about two-way listening, listening. And Mr. Burnham asserted that inferred, inferred, I should use the word inferred, that you all in the city council are listening, and you have been listening. That's a very interesting assertion from my point. I was homeless in Livermore for six years, nine months continuously. I'm housed now, I've been housed about twenty months. It's a blessing. I'm deeply lucky. Feels like a flight of a phoenix out of the ashes, actually. But during that time that I was homeless for six years, nine months, I spoke to the city council for two years, two and a half years, at what was called the Community Forum on homelessness. I missed two meetings, all of two meetings in that time. Was there any listening? I don't really think so, but I'm impressed, the fact to learn that Councilman Carling and the city manager have read Rough Sleepers. I'm impressed with that book. I, the short chapter, Death by Housing. It was an interesting chapter. Councilman Branning asserts that the solution to homelessness is housing. Well, where's the housing? My point has been, over the years, you put far too many resources into too few people. Twenty million dollars into Vineyard Two dot O for twenty-four, twenty-five people. Well, then, a few meetings ago, a funding comes up for four hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, some odd dollars. And where does over ninety percent of that funding go? Oh, Vineyard Two dot O, and eighteen thousand and some odd change, about four percent of it goes to emergency shelter, about nineteen thousand, some odd change, goes to CityServe. Well, you know, a lot of resources for a few, as I keep saying, and the other ones are out in the cold. They're suffering, and they're dying. And I keep asking the question, how many homeless have died in Livermore in the last twelve months or previous homeless? I knew three homeless that were housed at Chestnut, J.R., Chuck, and Jim. They're housed, they're dead. They died. And so what are we going to mouth? Housing first is the answer? We keep doing this, the state keeps doing this. Proposition one is a disaster, and we keep on the same mode. So contrary to homelessness and a number of subjects, it really hasn't felt like the city council has been listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott.
The next speaker is Donna Caban, followed by Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Felicia Ziomac.
Good evening. Good news about unleaded aviation fuel at the airport. The air permit fee for the existing one thousand gallon tank was paid February tenth. This allows unleaded UL ninety-four to be sold at LVK. I'm not sure about the timeline for the issuance of the air permit. I'm trying to verify the timeline with the air district. However, I would like to thank the city manager, the assistant city manager, the fixed-based operator, and city staff for their efforts to support this important step in reducing lead air pollution at LVK. I hope the city council will also consider using airport enterprise funds, excuse me, to buy a eight thousand, five hundred gallon tank to sell UL GAMI one hundred, which will be available this summer. And I brought an article, and I'll leave, that you can read about the accelerated timeline approval. Unleaded GAMI one hundred can be used in any tank or engine as a drop-in fuel. Many pilots like this fuel because it requires less maintenance on engine and helps the environment. GAMI one hundred can also serve as an interim fuel until the FAA approves future fuels. The cost estimates of a second tank range between three hundred and four hundred thousand. The current balance of airport enterprise funds is between seven and eight million dollars. Investing in a second tank protects the health and safety of Livermore residents within a one point five mile radius of LVK, which includes residents of Somerset, Sage, Montage, and Isabel neighborhood, neighborhoods, Isabel Plan neighborhoods. Please consider adding this to matters initiated at a next or future city council meeting. Last Monday, I heard a presentation by Airport Development Director Cardwell at a Livermore Airport Commission meeting. The airport development plan is in the scoping stage, gathering data, input, and feedback from both aviation and non-aviation groups. The project will shape where, what, and when airport development will occur in the future. The scoping results will define the project deliverables, such as a development map that will be presented to the city council this June, a short turnaround time. Anyone having concerns about noise, air pollution, lead air pollution, and/or ideas for the airport, please contact Director Cardwell to be included in the upcoming meetings and to provide comments. Just have one more thing. His email is BWCardwell@cityofLivermore.net. Now is the time to speak up and participate. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't think that's actually his email anymore, is it? Isn't it LivermoreCA.gov? Oh, you do? Okay.
I apologize.
No, no, no. I know that's the one you had. I'm just helping everybody else understand that.
Okay.
We don't use Livermore anymore. It's now LivermoreCA.gov.
Okay.
It changed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for letting me know.
You're welcome. Thank you. Who's next?
I just need one moment. It'll be Shirley Lewandowski, followed by Felicia Ziomac, followed by Jackson Peterson.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor or vice mayor, council members and city staff. My name is Shirley Lewandowski, and I'm a longtime resident of Dublin. I'm here to support the good news that Donna Cabane has just conveyed to you, and that GAMIs UL one hundred UL avgas is now commercially available and coming to California this summer. You may already know that GAMU L one hundred was developed in two thousand and nine and tested over thirteen years, has fully passed FAA's STC, which is the supplemental type certification, when it provided reams of test data in two thousand and twenty-two, proving that it can be used in every spark ignition piston engine and for every airplane using any of those engines. GAMU one hundred UL is fungible. In other words, exchangeable with all types of leaded avgas. A current lead, a current leaded avgas tank can be emptied and used to store GAMU one hundred UL. When other suppliers of unleaded avgas come into the market, theirs will also be fungible with GAMU one hundred UL, just like buying unleaded gas for your car from any Shell, Chevron, Phillips, Exxon, or BP gas station. Availability to get GAMIs one hundred UL to California came from the fact that when Governor Newsom heard that, from the FAA back in September twenty twenty-two, he immediately worked up through the chain of command to the Office of Secretary Pete Buttigieg's Department of Transportation to make sure California would get this fuel by the end of two thousand and twenty-three or early two thousand and twenty-four. There is now scheduled twenty-five railcars, each carrying about twenty-eight thousand gallons, for a total of seven hundred thousand gallons of GAMU L coming to California. These gallons are initially targeted for three airports, one in Bakersfield, one in Watsonville, and in San Jose, specifically the Reed Hillview, which is, of course, the first municipal airport to stop, to sell leaded gas, avgas. I asked the city to prioritize the airport enterprise fund for the purchase of the new second tank in readiness to supply the GAMU one hundred UL, and a timeline to get when that tank will be able to be available for us. I also asked the city to get in line as soon as possible, as there are hundreds of municipal airports now wanting to purchase GAMU one hundred UL. Thank you all for your efforts to make LVK be an unleaded avgas supplier airport. This is to help make the health and welfare of the residents living near the airport more safe from further exposure to toxic leaded gas. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Felicia Ziomac, followed by Jackson Peterson, followed by Jean King.
Good evening, city council members and staff. I echo the comments of Donna Caban and Shirley. Thank you for establishing the city website to post information about the Livermore Airport land use analysis and development. I encourage anyone interested in learning about what airport land and use development is being discussed to enroll at the city website to request notification of meetings open to the public. Thank you for instituting the requirement mandating selling UL ninety-four unleaded fuel at Livermore Airport in two years and pursuing getting the existing unused fuel tank permitted for UL ninety-four fuel, albeit a small-sized tank. Can this be accelerated to less than two years? Given that most existing piston engine airplanes at Livermore Airport can't use UL ninety-four unleaded fuel, the city should pursue acquiring a larger eighty-five hundred gallon fuel tank to hold GAMU one hundred UL fuel. GAMU one hundred UL fuel will be sold in California by summer. Lead and aviation fuel is emitted into the air while the plane is doing a run-up, which is temporarily advancing its throttles to ensure the engine can produce takeoff thrust. Wind direction, which is usually from west to east in this area, will cause the lead in the air to flow into nearby Livermore neighborhood. CDC states, quote, "No safe blood lead level in children has been identified. Even low levels of lead in blood have been shown to affect IQ, ability to pay attention, and academic achievement," unquote. The child who lived less than one mile from the airport runway in a house that mitigated other lead sources and whose blood tested positive for lead has now moved out of Livermore as a result. The half-life of lead, which refers to the time it takes for the concentration to decrease by half after the exposure has stopped, varies from about a month in blood, one to one and a half months in soft tissue, and about twenty to five to thirty years in bone. While the city and airport appear to be pursuing developing hydrogen electric aviation projects at Livermore Airport, it's my understanding that current piston aircraft can't be converted to using hydrogen electric technology, and they will continue to require fuel. So it's important to continue pursuing the goal of offering unleaded fuel for sale at the airport to serve existing tenants and older aircraft. To quote a recent article in The Independent, quote, "Electric aviation remains in its early stages. Federal certifications must be acquired before the new electric technologies can fly passengers. Large, all-electric commercial aircraft might not be viable for decades, according to one National Academies of Science study," unquote. While these hurdles are being overcome, the city and airport need to continue providing fuel for existing aircraft, and that fuel should be the unleaded variety to protect the public from lead exposure. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jackson Peterson, followed by Jean King, followed by Connie Cops.
Good evening, respected members of the Livermore City Council, esteemed staff, and valued members of the community. My name is Jackson Peterson, and today I'm excited to introduce GovGPT, an AI-driven tool designed to optimize the city's governance and communication processes. For clerks, GovGPT revolutionizes the way city clerks handle public comments. With its advanced AI, it automatically crafts tailored email responses to each comment, ensuring personalized and timely communication. Moreover, it categorizes these comments effectively, making tracking and addressing specific community concerns easier. For council chambers, in city council meetings, GovGPT's transcription feature is a game-changer. It accurately captures live public comments as they're being spoken or emailed and creates an instant written record. This not only aids in maintaining transparency, but also eliminates the need for language translators, which can cost a fortune. For city leadership, GovGPT provides a real-time dashboard that tracks the pulse of the community. It offers insights into the issues constituents care about, aiding in responsive and data-driven decision-making. The dashboard is a powerful tool aligning city policies with the evolving needs and priorities of its citizens. In conclusion, GovGPT is not just a technological solution, it's a step towards a more engaged, efficient, and inclusive city governance. Its implementation could mark a significant advancement in how Livermore connects with and serves its community. Thank you for considering the potential of GovGPT for Livermore. I'm eager to continue this conversation and explore how we can implement this technology effectively. Following this council meeting, I'll be reaching out to schedule individual demos and answer any questions you might have. Thank you, and have a great meeting.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jean King, followed by Connie Cops.
Good evening. I want to say that I also agree with the comments by the three other speakers about the airport. Okay. I urge the city to prioritize the availability of the unleaded fuel at the Livermore Airport. It should include the UL ninety-four and also the GAMU one hundred that can be used in any tank or engine. There is an interesting possibility of bringing hydrogen fuel to the Livermore Airport for airplanes, trucks, and public transportation. That will be much further in the future. So let's do the unleaded fuel in the meantime. One of the problems with the automobile electric cars is the availability of refueling charging stations. Will that also be a problem with fuel cells, especially for airplanes? A pilot was quoted as saying, quote, "At the end of the day, nobody will build a fuel pump for a fuel that doesn't exist into an airplane that don't exist," end of quote. Hydrogen fuel takes a lot of energy to produce and requires special storage and transport. One suggestion is to have a hundred and forty acres of solar panels on Livermore Airport land to provide the power to produce the hydrogen fuel. Wouldn't it be better to put the solar panels on the roofs of all the buildings, the hangars, and the other buildings, and the parking areas of the airport, so the land can be put to dual use? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Connie Cops, followed by Carl Wentie.
Hi, my name is Connie Cops, and I came here to talk about some concerns I have with my neighborhood and its relationship with the city. But I think Mr. Scott really tugged at my heartstrings and really wanted me to, you know, kind of like, I don't know, just ask you to really think about, like, what he does bring here, and how are homeless and the needs of housing are maybe needing a second and third look on how we, you know, how creatively we might solve some of these problems? I really respect the fact that you guys, you know, John Marshawn, he was talking about how, you know, he really attracts a lot to Livermore and its economy through real estate. You know, we have a lot of wealth, and we're doing a lot of really nice things with our downtown, and things are really great that way. But I'm just wondering, you know, it is cold out at night, and there are people on the streets, and they're there for a multitude of reasons. I remember one time you had said, Robert Carling, how, oh, why can't people just live with their families? You must have a really nice family. Not everybody, you know, can go home to mom. They might not have a mom to go home to. I'm lucky I do if I was in that situation. But we really, 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 really need to take a look at this and, and really, with all of our might and all of our senses and all of our resources and all of our people, we can't just let this be, you know, we can't just turn our heads to it, especially because there are a multitude of reasons. And please look at this hard and, and with wisdom. We can solve this to some degree. Maybe not everything, but we can give people more opportunities. And I really hope that, you know, if people are listening to this on, like, the television, look inside of yourself and think, what can I do to maybe bring an idea to help solve the situation? You know, look at it, you know, you're only as good as the people you surround yourself with. My friend Dennis used to always say that. And we really have to look in our hearts to find out, what can we bring to the table? What conversations can we have? How can we look and try to just make it easier for some people who weren't born with a silver spoon in their mouth, you know? And I really know you guys have a lot on your plate, and I'm not exactly need you to do magic, but try to do what you can.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Wentie.
Hello, everybody. City council, thank you all so much for what you do, for running for public office and being part of this experiment. Those who put on a bulletproof vest and go to work salute you. The badge will keep us safe. Thank you, thank you. City staff, what you all do, making this all work, right? Worst form of government, except for every other form of government there's ever been. So appreciate everything that goes along with that. I would like to, you know, follow up on, or just the compliments I've been hearing about Mr. Cardwell, Economic Development Director Cardwell, really taking a holistic look at this city and moving forward. Comes from a lot of different places. I'm just sharing that for no good reason, other than I think he was going to bribe me with something. Maybe we'll see how it goes. Just kidding. It's all, it's all genuine and awesome, and I hear a lot of that, and it's just a great diversity to see. So thank you, Mr. Cardwell, for what you do. Thank you, city attorney. Thank you, Mr. Spence. Thank you, Mariana, for what you do. It's just awesome that we live in a place that does care and does listen. Following up on the homeless piece, too, Greg Scott, Connie Cops, right? It is, it is important, right? We should judge ourselves based on how we take care of the most desolate in our community. We should judge ourselves based on how we take care of the most desolate. And I know y'all are trying, doing that. I'll say, are we ever doing enough? I don't know that you can. Is there always going to be disparity? Yeah, probably, but at the same time, it's that always do more of... Of the sandwich and a blanket goes a long way. Well, then you're encouraging that. Well, then you're that and that. But a simple solution is putting dollars to work across our most desolate. So I know you all care deeply about this and I appreciate that deep care as it goes. Um, and this relates to get involved, right? There's scoping deliverables coming up as it relates to the airport. There's an airport commission. I'm not going to get these names perfectly right. Commission, committee, this, that and the other. But fundamentally, how you lean in, take part, right? How the citizens can take part. Some of them you have to be appointed, Allah the Planning Commission, and Allah the General Plan Update Committee, appointed, all the process of government. There's Airport Commission, there's Health and Human Services, I believe. There's library, housing, I'm not so sure there's specific housing. Hell, there's mosquito abatement, there's beautification, there's Commission for the Arts, there's Historic Preservation Commission. I'm sure I missed something in there. It wasn't a perfect overview of it. But in terms of talking and celebrating the scoping deliverables as we're updating the airport policy, this is how it works, right? People show up. So I encourage, right? Show up, take part, give the feedback in terms of what is important to you. I know we all believe fundamentally important. Quality of clean air is important, quality of clean water is important. And so may we take a leading edge on it. Y'all took a leading edge on vaping and other stuff like that. Taking a leading edge and keeping lead out of combustion engines makes good sense. That said, do it safely, do it pragmatically, as I know you all will. Don't know what else other than thank you all, thank you all, thank you all. Livermore is an awesome place, may it continue to be. Appreciate you all looking in, going to serve. Tell everybody you know, get out and vote, take part in this beautiful little experiment.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment.
Thank you. So I'll close public comment. I'll do item 5.0, the consent calendar. Are there any items any of my colleagues would like to pull? Seeing none, do we have any public comment about?
No public comment's been received.
Right?
Our speaker is Connie Cops.
Thank you. So on item 5.2, I noticed like at your last meeting, you discussed this neighborhood and that, but there wasn't a clear map on, on your website. You know, when I was reading, there wasn't a link to the map. There was, it was, a map was shown at the city council meeting, the last one. But like if you were reading it ahead of time, that map, you'd have to go down to the city to actually look at that map. And now like today, you know, I was really interested in learning a little bit more about this. So I wanted to go down to the county, but you know, today's, there's a holiday, so the county offices are closed. You know, I wanted to look at the historical maps on that. And the reason I was interested in it was because I know that was originally a different development and then I think it was Pell sold to the other, Tru- TruMark. But then there's something in there where TruMark states that if you don't go ahead and go with the, what do you call it? The neighborhood, that the city should eminent domain it. And I'm wondering, why doesn't TruMark just own that? Like, why would they have to eminent domain it? I didn't get that part. And I don't know, I just really kind of like been watching things closely because of things that have been happening in my neighborhood in Springtown. And I know some of the times when you have a homeowners association or I think it, I don't know, Mellow Ruth or whatever, that sometimes people move in and they're not really sure what's going on. I'm just really concerned, like who owned that property in the beginning? And why did it even go to development? And I'm just really interested in wondering how come like when you're talking about something, you can't really see the map in advance? Because it's really hard to formulate questions if it's not all on there. So that's where I'm at with that and thank you for letting me speak and air my concerns. I appreciate it.
See, regarding that, we, City Council approved that project some years ago.
No, no, that wasn't my.
I know that. I'm getting to the.
TruMark?
I'm trying to get to your, to answer your question. It was approved some years ago. TruMark then bought the property after, more recently, for a project that was approved some years ago. And the maps are in the, are in the material.
I had questions that just couldn't get answered timely because the map wasn't there.
I saw it. Mr. Spence?
Good evening, Paul Spence, your Assistant City Manager. So we can certainly provide you with links to the maps. They were provided in previous council reports. This is for property, you're right, Vice Mayor, that was previously approved. There was a development agreement which locked in that development and now TruMark is looking to build that project out. And the financing district that was created will help pay for infrastructure improvements for that property.
I'm not aware of anything that was eminent domained.
I am not either.
Okay. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Wentie.
Hello, Carl Wentie. Again, thank you all for what you do. I just want to take the opportunity to thank you, to say thank you to Tina Olson and Jason Alcala just for the volume of stuff they have to review every gosh darn meeting and getting it as right as we can in this imperfect world. So thank you all for what you do.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comments.
Thank you. That will conclude public comment. Bring it back to the council. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. We have no public hearings, nor do we have any matters for consideration. Brings us to item eight, Councilmember Reports and Matters Initiated. We'll start with Mr. Branning.
I have nothing to add to my report out and no matters initiated today. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kik.
I have LAVTA on Monday the 5th. I do have a question for staff, which I don't, you will tell me if it rises to the level of matters initiated. Do we have an AI policy?
Councilmember Kik, thank you for asking the question. This is your city manager, Mariana Morishova. We currently do not have an AI policy. However, we're actively working on it. Our Assistant Director of Administrative Services has distributed a first draft to the executive team and we're looking at it carefully. We're also looking at the potential applications of AI in the city. So stay tuned. We will be updating you in the next few months.
Great. I just wanted to make an unrelated statement. We're going to start hearing about it a lot. And as usual, I think it's important that we have a policy in place. So I'm glad to hear that we are working on that. Thank you.
We'll just get some AI bot to write it. Mr. Berantos?
Oh my God, here. My attendant, January 24th through 26th, LOC C. Okay. League of California Cities Academy for Mayors and Councilmembers. And I attended various sessions on policies and laws and all that. And it was interesting, some little by little, increase in my brain size. And then I did have a coffee with a, remember her last name? The, her, Vera Khan's field rep. She came and wanted to talk about any issues in it. And I did bring up Springtown and we basically talked about working from home. And that's a big issue that is coming up, that a lot of people want to stay home and work. And we brought up the positive things about it. And so that was a little discussion on that. I did go to a HOA meeting and I just listened and know what the concerns were at the HOA over there. And each one has their own problems. And I did take the time to inform them of what the city has planned for the area. And some people haven't heard of it and I showed her the costs, the $8 million we're thinking about spending in that area. And some people didn't know about it because, you know, that's the way it goes. And one of the biggest things about that HOA is that they can't get the information out to their people because emails and they bounce back and they're having a hard time getting it out together there. But that's one HOA and I have my problem with my HOA, like a red car sitting there for a month. Anyway, so that's what I've done.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add, other than I'd like to encourage folks to look at the StopWaste.org website. They have, Stop Waste has about a million dollars or maybe a little bit more for grants to look at upstream, you know, things that might pertain to reuse and repair, recycle, that kind of thing. So they're looking for people, you know, nonprofits and others to, to look at the categories and to make proposals. You have until March 14th to supply your, your request for, for some money to help you out. So again, StopWaste.org, they have about a million dollars to spend on grants upcoming. The only other thing I would like to, as the city manager, a couple of the folks talked about the plan for the airport. Again, this is an ongoing contract with, with somebody to look at land use there and the expectation is to bring that back to the council in June, as mentioned.
Vice Mayor Carling, this is your city manager, Mariana Morishova. We engaged the consultant to help us evaluate what could be and should be possible with regards to the airport development. Their work is supposed to be completed by June and sometime after that, we will evaluate their results and definitely bring them back to both the Airport Commission and the City Council for information. And based on those results, we will be soliciting development at the airport.
Yeah, I think, I think that's really important that we get an objective view of the development out there because I know there's lots of ideas that have been kicked around in terms of how to use that space out there. Ms. King even talked about the solar panels. And so I think we need to take a very serious look at how that might move, how we might improve the airport as we move forward, not only in terms of providing unleaded fuel, but also what the future technologies might be developed and how might, might be, you know, brought to bear on the operation at the airport. So I think we all look forward to seeing that. Okay, with no other further business before the city council.
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, so Debbie, can you give me an idea on how many people have applied for those opening slots mentioned by Carl? Because I've been trying to get people to get involved.
Currently, we've received nine applications for the different advisory bodies. I do want to point out, most people wait until the last week to submit it. So we've done extensive outreach this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, with no other further business being brought before the city council, this meeting is adjourned until our next meeting, two weeks from tonight, on February the 26th. Thank you.